Okay. Good evening and welcome to the North Bend City Council, North Bend Urban Renewal Agency Work Session Agenda for Monday, May 8th at four thirty P M here in the council chambers. Like to officially call the meeting to order. And the first item of business is we have public comment. Public comment. We'd like to make sure that we welcome everybody who's here in the council chambers and then for those, everybody who's listening online and thank them for participating in the public comment period this evening. And the public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has three minutes to speak and we will have our city recorder with the timer on that. Our governing body takes input into consideration. However, in observance of Oregon open meeting laws, this isn't a time for dialogue, but it's time for us to listen to you. Our city recorder and city administrator are taking notes of any action as needed. So it looks like I have one person in, one person here in person. And that's Rene Majeski. If you want to go ahead and come forward, we have a microphone and a chair right on up here. And when you're ready, we'll go ahead and have the city reporter start the timer. All right, welcome and thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Rene Majeski. I have been a business owner and real estate investor in North Bend for over thirty eight years since nineteen eighty five. I own the historic brick block Citizens Building established in nineteen oh nine and still housing North Bend's first quite beautiful bank vault. I lease out office space and commercial space in this twenty thousand square foot building and operate the Beauty and the Beast Antique Shop as well. I also purchased the parking lot and building across Virginia for my tenants and customer usage after significant loss of parking. That's when the city changed diagonal parking on Virginia to parallel and added bump backs. I'm now discouraged to learn that the city has proposed plans to place the homeless in our new Main Street downtown corridor along Highway one oh one Sheridan and on North Bend's beautiful waterfront Harbor Avenue. This is one of our city's finest view locations developed for locals and tourists. Great place to watch Fourth of July fireworks too. Why would the city or its residents want a homeless camp there? My neighboring real estate owners and myself believe our investments will be devalued by this plan. I routinely pick up after the homeless, including wet and soiled clothing, food scraps, trash, blankets, and worse. Who is responsible for cleaning up after these homeless people? Me? I'm getting tired of it. Last month, I found another homeless man sleeping in my antique shop's entrance at eleven o'clock in the morning. He scared me. He had half fistful of rocks, empty beer cans, and lots of litter. He finally left with his sleeping bag over his head, walking along one oh one. This is a terrible look for our city's entrance, and I believe if you place the proposed homeless camp a block away, crime, litter, vandalism, and more will increase in worsen. It will destroy downtown. Additionally, one of my biggest concerns are the sixty thousand gallons of propane stored adjacent to the Harbor Avenue homeless camp. I was told by AmeriGas that if their tanks caught fire, the explosion would level blocks right up. I'm aware that the homeless have started fires in the area. The oyster boat dock nearly caught fire when homeless started fires underneath it. I've spoken with the Kokeel tribe. They have expressed concerns of safety and pollution as well. The city of North Bend only has easement rights to the boardwalk from the tribe, and I find it hard to believe that the homeless would not encroach onto tribe-owned property from the parking lot designated for tent camping. I've also spoken with ODOT regarding homeless RV parking on one oh one. They have informed me that no camping is permitted along Highway one oh one or in the right of ways. So why was this one oh one location even in the plan? Before the meeting, I've written or spoken to each of you personally, expressing all of my concerns and recommendations. I thank you for listening and for your support. I do have empathy for the homeless. Most need mental drug or alcohol treatment. The city should also set up programs to help them resolve those issues. Please support your downtown merchants and property owners. I implore you to vote against locating homeless on one oh one or Harbor Avenue. Thank you for your time. Good evening.
Right, thank you. Okay, we have two other items that I'm going to be reading in to the record. And the first one is a letter from Ingles Furniture, Steve Knight, says you're North Bend City Council and Mayor Engelke, Engelke. Pronounce my own name. I am aware the decision. I'm aware of the decision to designate a location or locations to provide a place where the homeless can rest, sleep and needs, that the needs to be made soon. I submitted a letter to the council in January of twenty twenty two for myself and Eric Ingles regarding our opposition and rationale against the harbor locations. Since then, we have followed and learned along with you regarding possible solutions and locations. I thought the discussion you had on May in, 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 had in Monday's April seventeenth work section was thoughtful all around and with good points and critical thinking. No one wants this in their front yard. I acknowledge this. Our opposition and rationale against the harbor location was, has not changed since last January. Every suggested location has rationales for or not being ideal for various reasons. And unfortunately, I do not have the perfect location suggestion either. I realize that this selection and and I, and I emphasize with you for all that you're doing right now and what you have in front of you. If you do not, if you do choose the select, if you do choose to select Harbor as an initial location, I have a couple more things for you to consider. RVs will be right down by the waterfront and can impede traffic or business interests, entrances. If you designate the harbor location for RVs, something must be changed with the daytime parking rules and signage. If there isn't a change that would stop them from remaining in their spot. If you, if there isn't a change, would that stop them remaining in their spot for the entire day? If you decide on Harbor, why not designate it for tent camping? There would be less complication with the big RVs sprawled out and about potentially blocking traffic and delivery trucks. The last point that I would like to make now is law enforcement will be critical for the time designations and possible increase to property damage and theft. We had three incidents in two months last year costing ten thousand dollars in theft and damaging and damages at the Ingles Storage Shed. Counselor Gaul's thirteen thousand square foot Harbor Warehouse with a hundred and fifty thousand in trucks and over a million in inventory. I imagine Chief Mitt's increased patrol will be common in the final designated locations. Thank you, everyone, for all that you're doing to keep making North Bend a better place. And then the, and one other letter says concerns about proposed homeless camps on Hamilton near our school bus yard. Should have you read these. Before we go into this. I want to acknowledge that it's a complex issue that affects thousands of people across our nation. It is our moral obligation as a society to address the issue with empathy, understanding, and practical solutions. However, today we must consider the implications of the proposed locations on Hamilton Avenue and its potential impact on the safety and security of our school's transportation system. The school bus yard is a vital part of our educational structure, ensuring that our children can travel to and from school safety efficiently. The proposed location of the homeless camp on, on Hamilton Avenue near the bus yard raises concerns about the safety and security of our buses by extension of our students. While we appreciate the city council's efforts to address homelessness in our community, we must also carefully consider the potential consequences of this proposal. There is a risk of increased incidences of buses being broken into and expensive equipment being stolen from within. This could pose a significant financial burden and compromise the safety of our students. When buses are tampered with, our equipment is missing. And the functionality and reliability of these vehicles are put at risk. It is our responsibility to ensure the safety of our children and the proposed homeless camps location on Hamilton Avenue. So close to the bus yard may undermine this objective. Furthermore, the proposed location could inadvertently expose our students to unsafe and unsanitary conditions. While we must work together to find solutions to help those experiencing homelessness, we must also prioritize the safety and well-being of our students. By addressing the situation, we will be protecting the health and safety of our children and ensuring the continued efficiency of our school transportation system. In conclusion, the city council's proposal to establish a homeless camp on Hamilton Avenue near our school bus yard is a well-intentioned effort to address homelessness in our community. However, we must consider the potential risks and safety, security, and well-being of our students. We encourage the city council to work with the community to identify alternative solutions and locations that with, will better serve the needs of our community and members, including those experiencing homelessness and our students. Thank you for your attention and support. We will let us work together to create a safe and thriving community for all of its members. All right. So those were the ones to be read in the record. Thank you so much, and thank you for participating in public comment. There's one more, and that was, that one was just for your information. So unless somebody specifically requested to be read into the record. Yeah, so you have a copy of any additional information. All right. Well, that was our public comment period. We'll go ahead and move on to number three, and we have a presentation tonight from Bay Area Hospitals. CEO Brian Moore. And Brian, welcome. And do you have a PowerPoint presentation for us tonight or?
I do.
You do? Okay.
Visual aids I hope will be helpful. Well, good evening, good afternoon. Thank you for a few minutes to share an update on our community hospital. I am Brian Moore, President and CEO of Bay Area Hospital. Context, I think, is important, and so I wanted to start with a, a quick review, and you can go to the next slider. Do I advance? Oh, perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you for your help with this. Mouse. To the next page. Perfect. Uh, so some context will be helpful. I live and breathe hospitals and healthcare, so I, my eye catches headlines that many may be glazing past. So I, I pulled a collection here from kind of the last year or so. And it's really interesting. Healthcare hospital systems here in the Pacific Northwest have made the, the headlines with some pretty significant financial challenges. You can see Oregon hospitals, their finances have, have turned upside down. We saw the same thing up in Washington. We have seen headlines about workforce. When we look at the national headlines, we see similar things there. Some names you may recognize from the East Coast there with Mass General Brigham. Two point three billion dollar loss reported for twenty two. A number of hospitals listed at risk foreclosure across the nation. And many times what you see is that scale. Healthcare system size serves as a buttress, as a protection against financial challenge. We have not seen that to be the case with some of the financial challenges on the backside of COVID. Common Spirit probably has thousands of locations between their hospitals and their clinics. A pretty large West Coast presence from California, but really a national footprint. An operating loss of one point three billion dollars in twenty two. Cleveland Clinic, over a billion dollars loss as well as independent hospitals. So if you're small, independent, if you're large, the challenges on the backside of COVID are hitting everyone. So now let's drill down and talk a little bit more specifically. Hospitals through the Hospital Association here in Oregon share and report our financial data so that can be aggregated. And what you see here are a couple of different looks at profitability. This line on the left, look at operating and total margins. You can see as we got into the backside of calendar twenty two that profitability plunge turned negative. We're bouncing back a little bit, but still continuing to struggle. Looking at the other chart, that red line represents expenses. And so when it climbs to the top, it's exceeding all kinds of revenue, whether you look at total revenue or operating revenue. That means hospitals are upside down financially. Some of the other challenges that we face now get into really how hospitals are paid. For much of our payment at Bay Area Hospital, about eighty five percent is kind of fixed. And what do I mean by that? For a patient who comes in with a specific diagnosis, the hospital receives a fixed payment based on that diagnosis. And you know, historically, the law of large numbers, you can kind of make that work. Well, one of the things that we were challenged with during the pandemic reflected in this graph is the average length of stay. And as patients got stuck in hospitals, and one of the reasons that they got stuck, most people with the typical hospital visit were able to send them home, right, for their next final phase of recovery. But there are a number of patients who need support. Maybe they need to go to skilled nursing. Maybe they need to go to a rehab location. Maybe they need the support of, of home health. And so as part of our discharge plan, we make sure those services are available. And what we were up against this last year, those healthcare systems were also under pretty extreme challenges. And so patients normally discharged for their next phase of recovery were essentially stuck in hospitals. And we saw that between four and six hundred patients across the state, ready for discharge. But the other parts of the healthcare system were under pressure, so they were stuck in the hospital. And what that meant is as patients are spending that extra day, hospitals are providing all of that care, additional nursing care, foods, supplies, all of those things. But they were receiving zero incremental revenue. So that puts some additional financial challenges on, on hospitals. Now I want to share a little bit of information from our very own community hospital here, Bay Area Hospital. The lower left-hand graph. The numbers are a little small there, but you can see, so we're looking at rolling twelve months, right? So there's a lot of smoothing. We're taking twelve-month averages, go the next month and, and look at the next most recent twelve-month snapshot and keep looking at a rolling twelve months. This looks at our labor cost as a percentage of our net revenue. And you can see back in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, even getting into twenty twenty and into twenty one, we're pretty stable. Fifty percent, fifty-five percent of our patient revenue is focused on healthcare staffing. Then we get into twenty one, and that's the timeframe that we in our community experienced. Really, our first COVID surge. It was kind of Labor Day weekend where we saw some of our first spikes in twenty twenty one. So that fall of twenty one, and then into the December, January, February of twenty two, when we had the Omicron spike. And we had some pretty significant changes in our labor workforce here. And our labor costs just spiked as we were making investments in short-term labor to help us maintain our access for the community. Couple of graphs here that take a look at hospital turnover. So in HR speak termination means anybody that leaves, that could be retirement. You know, up through any of the other myriad reasons that folks could leave an organization. So the red line represents people leaving the organization. And the blue line represents people joining the organization. So you can see an increase in both. Looking at that top graph, that's all positions at the hospital. The bottom graph is zeroing in just on our nurses. So let's look at this top graph first off. You can see we saw an increase both in hire and turnover as well as people leaving the organization through the early parts of the pandemic. We reached this kind of crescendo on the fourth quarter of twenty twenty one where we had really a significant increase in the number of folks leaving the hospital. And we have been in recovery since that kind of peak decreasing our turnover. We've also seen overall a decrease in higher rate. But when we get down to nursing, we've actually seen an increase in nursing as we get to the most recent quarters. And we have seen our nursing exits, our terminations begin to stabilize at really the lowest level since the pandemic began. So we're really encouraged by that. But we have not really bridged that gap. We have seen a net exodus of, of healthcare workers, not only at Bay Area, but really across the industry nationally, which has created some real, well, it, it ties to those increase in, in labor costs that we, we just looked at. Bay Area Hospital was proud to serve as kind of an anchor in the region when it came to our pandemic response. If you can remember, we all have pretty much now access to at-home COVID testing. But we fought for literally years in the middle of the pandemic to get that basic thing of testing availability. When we entered in Coos County, our first COVID spike in the fall of twenty twenty one, you still couldn't get reliably a COVID test anywhere. One of the things that Bay Area Hospital did during that first surge in the fall of twenty one was to implement a free drive-up COVID testing clinic. We had referrals from the schools. I talked to many community members. Sometimes they cycled through a couple of times a month based on their schedule just to make sure they were keeping their loved ones safe. Little sniffle, something they were concerned about, an exposure, they would come through the drive it, the drive-through clinic and receive a free COVID test and, and get a result right there while they were waiting. When the vaccines rolled out, we provided over ten thousand vaccinations for the clinic or for residents of the community. And of course, we had this rolling cascade about who was eligible, if you can remember, and kind of smile at all the hubbub that it was when the vaccine first arrived. Of course, there were several other sites, public health, other hospitals in the area. But we administered almost ten thousand vaccines. Bay Area Hospital was the recipient of about eighteen million dollars in federal COVID support in a couple of different waves. Eighty-two percent of those COVID federal support dollars went right back into staffing. We were able to pay a COVID recognition and appreciation bonus to our staff. We definitely paid some increased wages to our permanent folks in terms of incentive and overtime pay. And then we also made investment in temporary labor to try to help out our staff so they didn't get overwhelmed and try to maintain access to healthcare services for the community. And then for much of the first couple of waves of COVID, we served as the regional referral site until we got into that Omicron surge in early twenty two. We were able to keep many COVID patients here in the community. We were able to take almost all of the COVID patients that the area Critical Access hospitals had and, and to take their care on with some of our additional specialty coverage at Bay Area Hospital. Right now, Bay Area Hospital is in the middle of a pretty significant financial turnaround. We've got our plan. We're making progress. We've cut our losses significantly. We're still losing money on a month-to-month basis, but much less than we were ten to twelve months ago. Our pathway to financial sustainability really includes first and foremost securing and regaining positive cash flow. Incorporated into that is stabilizing and rebuilding our workforce. I have to be honest, I think we're up against significant challenge there because I think the country is really headed towards at least a ten-year rebuild of its healthcare workforce. And for many of our jobs, there's a long training horizon before folks are even qualified. And I have met some of those folks who through their healthcare encounters during the pandemic, they're zeroing in on that new healthcare opportunity as a new career for them. But for many of them, you know, they still have a couple of years of training. Excited about our, our partnership with SWAC. I think we've hired, I just got an update today. Nineteen new grad nurses, most of those coming from SWAC, but from some other area programs as well. The third step is really continuing to expand access to local healthcare options. Before I take questions, putting Bay Area Hospital's contribution to the healthcare landscape on the South Coast. Bay Area Hospital from Florence to the California line is the only hospital where you can have a baby. Is the only comprehensive cancer center. It's the only place where you can treat a heart attack in a cardiac cath lab. It's the only place for many specialized surgical procedures, including minimally invasive robotic surgery. Dr. Tursini, who will retire later this year, just marked his one thousandth robotic surgical case at Bay Area Hospital this last week. And then we're a significant employer, one of the largest employers on the Oregon coast with over eleven hundred staff. I take all those things to mean that we have a can't fail mission. And so we are in it and committed. How can our community help? How can you help? Carry the message forward. Keep healthcare local. We reinvest those dollars in supporting and, and making services available here. Thank a healthcare worker. It's been a while since people have been banging pots and pans to say thank you to healthcare workers. But I'll tell you, we've got a lot of burned-out folks in our organization. If you know them, if you encounter them, that smile and that thank you will go a long ways. Lastly, our, our economic impact is over three hundred and fifty million dollars as estimated. And we want to continue to be an engine for our local economies. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, was there any quick questions for Mr. Moore?
I've learned a lot.
Yeah. We do thank you, and we thank all of your staff, and I know it's been a hard couple of years, but we really appreciate you being here and when I had first heard that statistic about from Florence to Crescent City, the only place to have a baby, it really like put into perspective how valuable the hospital is among everything. So please let your employees know that we do appreciate them and and good luck moving forward.
Thank you for time to share the update with us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is we have number four. This is Coos Bay North and Water Board Budget Committee Appointment Discussion. This was a agenda request from Counselor Nordoff. So we've got some information here. Let's see, this is page one of the packet. And Counselor Nordoff, whenever you're ready, I believe we have a five minutes set aside for you.
Fifteen is for.
Oh, fifteen, okay.
Fifteen.
Fifteen. You can take the whole fifteen if you like, then I'll have our city reporter start the timer on that. Thank you. Yeah.
Sure. I'd like to start out by just reviewing what our council rules say about the section two point oh four oh six oh agenda and orders of business. Under the consent agenda, the rule is in order to make more efficient use of meeting time, the city administrator will place all items of a routine nature on which no debate is expected on a consent agenda. So when you look at the consent agenda here, which was an appointment to a board or committee, it, it doesn't really specify what board or committee, and it doesn't specify who's being appointed. Now Mayor Engelke specified that because I questioned it, she specified that she intended to appoint the finance director to the Water Board Budget Committee. Now, looking back at the, the, the agenda referenced page, another page that said that the council had for a number of years appointed a counselor. council had for a number of years appointed a counselor for the Water Ben Budget Committee. And in fact, it had been fifteen years. And for the last eight, before he, um, resigned from the council, it had been Mike Herbali. And I spoke with Mike, and he was really happy that he had volunteered to be on the budget committee. He really learned a lot. And he felt that it should stay within the council to be the representative to the budget committee. Likewise, Howard Graham, when he heard that the intent was to appoint the finance director, he went, what? Is the water board in that much trouble? And, um, I'm not sure what the justification was to move it, but I, I will just leave it at that. And then I got to thinking, and it's, you know, I went to court when I was tossed off committees during other business when I was not present. And Judge Martin Stone ruled that I was to be reinstated to the committees because you do not, you do not take that type of action under other business. And so Judge Martin Stone ruled in November of two thousand twenty-one that I was to be reinstated to the budget committee for the water board, which I have to say, I want to be on that committee. I had ten years as a power plant operator, both in nuclear and in hydro. And in the Bull Run watershed, which is for the city of Portland, that's the water supply. So I worked at the Bull Run areas and the ones on the Clackamas, three plants on the Clackamas. I really like operations. In fact, I ended up rewriting procedures for Portland General Electric because their operator, their chief operator was retiring. But, um, he, he did not, the judge did not rule on the matter. And it was a ritter review. He ruled on it in November. Obviously, the budget season is long gone by then. I asked to be appointed on the two thousand twenty-two Water Board Budget Committee. And Tim Slater was appointed instead. And I said, geez, I'm not going to be on it. And, um, there was a comment from another counselor, you're never going to be on it, which really rubbed my nose in it. I'm asking now two things, that we keep this appointment to the council. So the council, the city jointly owns the water board operation with the city of Coos Bay. Counselors should know something about it. And one way to do this is to have a counselor be on the budget committee. And I'm not sure where the thought came to change it to a staff appointment, but I do not agree with it. I think that some of, some knowledge of operations of the water board should be vested in the council and not everything conceded or, or just staff has enough work to do. The finance director has enough work to do. He's putting together our city budget. And so two things, I think it should stay as a counselor appointment. And I'm asking that I might be appointed to this position this year. And in an email to the mayor and the city administrator, I said I would, I would proceed diligently, do the homework, be, be dignified about it, and, and do the best I possibly can to represent the city at the Water Board Budget Committee. Plus, when I was president of the local engineering group in two thousand and ten, I worked with Greg Solers. I, I, I know a number of the people on the, on the board there outside of being a city counselor. So that concludes my presentation on matters.
All right, thank you. Um, I see we have our city attorney online here. Mr. Wolf, did you want to, um, join in on this conversation?
Yeah. Good evening.
Sorry. Oh, the light, we just got light turned on. Although we could say that's also for your presence too. They were very excited.
Oh. Hello, good, uh, good evening, I suppose we are now. Um, I, I, I guess I don't have a, a lot to add. Um, I think Councilor Nordoff has, has put her name into the hat as far as a, an appointment to the uh, water, Water Board Budget Committee. As, as you, as we're probably all aware, at this point, the Water Board, um, recently adopted a policy to give some process to this appointment. And under their policy, they have designated, um, two seats to the budget committee, one to be appointed by the mayor of North Bend and one to be appointed by the mayor of Coos Bay um, for one-year terms. So, so those are the parameters that the Water Board is looking for. And, and so mayor, it would be your choice as to who you're going to designate to be on the Water Board. There's no requirement that it be a city sitting, a sitting city counselor. Uh, there's certainly no prohibition against that as well.
And I didn't know if we needed to make any distinguish, um, if we needed to distinguish that this is not a council committee, but this is a water board committee. Or Water Board Budget Committee.
Yes, it's the Water Board seeking budget committee members. It's not a city commission or a city committee. Um, so it is distinguishable from Judge Stone's prior order and, and following that order, the city's, uh, reinstatement of Councilor Lordoff to her prior city boards and commissions.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, well, I do appreciate Councilor Nordoff, your information, and it's duly noted that, um, you are interested in this committee. In the previous meeting, I, um, had I made the, I had made the recommendation of the finance director, um, already, and I'm going to go ahead and stay with that for this year, but note that you are interested and that this is only a one-year appointment. So next year, um, when this appointment comes open again, um, then you and any other council that's interested, we can revisit that at that time.
Well, thank you. I put this on the agenda so I get to close it. Does anybody else have a, have an opinion on it?
I believe the way our council rules is just, uh, the way that, that works is you get to speak, um, and I don't know if we need to, if there's any.
What, what about the judge's order, mayor?
So as the city attorney was just, um, speaking, that's completely different committee. So Mr. Wolf, did you want to try to answer that again? I'm not sure if Councilor Nordoff understood you.
Excuse me?
Yeah, the judges.
Attorney speak, thank you.
The, uh, we're, we're called back in, uh, June of two thousand twenty-one. Uh, the council had made a motion, Councilor Nordoff was not present, to remove her from city boards and commissions. And then Judge Stone ordered for those assignments to be reinstated, and the council did so in, uh, November of two thousand twenty-one. And those were reinstatements back to city commissions and city committees. This is a Water Board Budget Committee. And they are simply seeking, uh, people to be on their budget committee, and they, their policy is for the mayors of North Bend and the mayors of Coos Bay to make those designations. This is different than a city committee and a city commission or, or, or lay committee.
Mr. Wolf, I was, I was removed from that budget committee. And I have, I have the agenda, the minutes from those two meetings that they held in two thousand twenty-one. I was at the first one. My name's there. The second one, my name's not there, and it said, absent members, none. So I was removed from that particular committee. And I'm asking to be, when the judge says that I shall be reinstated, for the reasons set forth below in the record filed with returned writ, the court concludes that the city council did not follow its rules considering the motion made that evening, and will order that the council reinstate petitioner to the committee assignments. This was a committee assignment. And this is one that the judge is ordering that I be returned to, and I don't want to wait another year. I've waited two thousand twenty-two.
So e- e- even if that was a, a, a city committee that you were removed from, and then subsequently put back on, this is a, this is a, a new year and a new appointment.
And I have not been returned to that, and it's up to the city to return me to that, sir.
Well, uh, Mayor, you've got my opinion. I don't believe that there's a requirement that you, uh, reinstate Councilor Nordoff to this budget committee. And per the Water Board's policy, you can, uh, appoint or designate who you would like.
All right, thank you. Well, um, I made my statement, so we will go ahead and then move on to the next agenda item, which is number five, which is herbal choices operating hours.
Better, Mayor?
Yes.
Um, Steph is, um, yanking this, uh, for a future meeting. We will bring this back to you. Um, but we will broaden, um, the discussion on that topic.
All right, perfect. Thank you very much. So number five, we're striking from the agenda. And that takes us to number six, which is our camping ordinance adoption discussion. Um, I am looking to our public works director and our city planner, seeing if they have some updated information for us.
Excuse me for that. Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Before you deny the discussions both on the draft resolution and the ordinance itself, as you're well aware, the ordinance, the state has stipulated that we adopt an ordinance by and have it in place by July one, twenty twenty-three or forever. Hold our peace. In essence, we can't adopt a, a camping ordinance beyond July one of two thousand twenty-three. Uh, any restriction that there is needs to be in place by that time. The ordinance itself has been developed over a period of time, um, through our town hall meetings, through multiple discussions with city council, and it's very simple at this point. Uh, it prohibits camping, homeless camping in the city of North Bend on public property. Flat prohibits it with the exception of areas designated by city council. So the re, and that is done through resolution. So the ordinance itself has been shaped through multiple meetings. Um, it allows it on private property, one in a residential area, up to three in a institutional commercially zoned area. But on public property, um, along with the restrictions, it's very simple crafted. We started with just prohibiting in residential areas. And as it sits today, it's prohibited throughout the entire city, in all zones, all property. As you're well aware, we have to provide for homeless camping somewhere in the city, and that's both in vehicles and, uh, on foot or tents or any type of camping. Uh, that is actually addressed by resolution. Council designates those locations that allows that. Um, so the resolution itself, which can be modified, um, you can modify it every two weeks if you want. I wouldn't recommend that, but you could, every council meeting, you could adopt a new resolution. Um, but the resolution itself establishes where camping shall be. And we are required by law to allow for camping, um, in the city of North Bend. But the simple parts of the ordinance, because it flat prohibits camping except for locations and times designated by city council through resolution.
Can I, I was gonna say, can I stop right there? Does anybody have a question about that? The way that that's.
All I'm saying is this is, this is, number six is all about the ordinance, and I've, we've gone over this ordinance multiple times, and I think Ralph says it's best. I think it's paying here in itself. So that, that number six is says camping ordinance adoption, and number seven is resolution. So, right, Ralph?
That is correct. I mean, there are time, place, and manner stipulations, stipulations in the ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
For where you allow it, the sticking points in the issues have been primarily on place.
Yeah.
And a little bit on time. But the ordinance stipulates those issues to be adopted by resolution. So I think at this point, and that's just me, that the ordinance itself is as you wish to have been crafted, and it is not necessarily, um, I don't want to say prejudicial because it prohibits camping except for in certain instances, but it, it's not, um, at this point, sorry, I, I'm brain dead for a second here, but it, it's not, uh, it's not an issue. Uh, I, I, I don't think there's issues in the ordinance itself. I think there's issues that are dealt with by resolution on location and time, um, that still need to be established.
Yeah.
I was waiting for time, so we can also bring, we, may I?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure I'm understanding. Um, because this is the spirit, I think, I and others, but I'm speaking for myself here. So my understanding with all of our discussions was that we were prohibiting any camping in North Bend with the exception of designated locations, time, and manner. So it's not allowed anywhere at any time.
On public property, on private property.
Oh, there's a private property, they have some rules they have to obey. Okay. Is, is that the case?
That is, and there is a stipulation of time, seven AM to seven PM on public property with the exception, exception, council can modify that by resolution.
Great.
Okay, yeah. So I think, I think that's our baseline. We're all right there, right? Okay, but we also, we, so then we know that we have this house bill that we have to create these sleep sites for, so that's what takes us to the next.
Doesn't, doesn't say camping is prohibited on public property in the city of North Bend because you have to establish reasonable locations, but that is done by resolution, not by ordinance. You have to establish reasonable locations and time. Uh, by some methodology, but in this case, that is done by resolution specific for on public property.
So in particular, when, when we look at some of the public comments, so I've noticed, and this could just be because people don't know, or it could be that it's, it's such a hot button issue that it's ignored, but I never hear any or read any references to time. And so, um, the, the letters that, like the letters we had today, it seemed like most of those people were assuming that camping was going to be twenty-four seven on certain locations, which is not the case.
Well, I think the references, the difference between camping and the homeless being there are, there's no restriction on them walking our streets.
Walking around.
Um, being present. And legally, we can't have any real restrictions there. It's the actual camping time that is stipulated by this ordinance, not, and and we don't intend to say they can't be present in our city limits. I, I.
Can they set up a chair? I just, so this is a question, like a scenario. Can they set up a chair on the sidewalk?
You can't prohibit something you wouldn't allow somebody else to do. So for an example, when I say that, and I think David has echoed this in the past, if they want to sit on a park bench in Simpson Park, and there's nothing restricting them from doing such. It's the act of camping, setting up a camp that is restricted. Uh, if they want to sit downtown on the sidewalk, as long as it meets ADA clearances, they can do that. Um, we have to provide them the same, uh, respect and facilities that we provide anybody. So there are benches, for example, on downtown. They can sit on the bench, uh, downtown. They can do any of these things. Just the act of setting up a camp in an area to sleep. Uh, that doesn't mean they can't sit there on a bench and sleep. What it does mean is they can't set up a camp, a nest, we'll call it, on a park bench and, uh, establish a campsite.
I just saw this walking here, so this is the only reason I'm questioning. So, um, there's a young gentleman, his dog, his cart, his chair, clothing, all of his possessions, I'm going to guess, and they were on a sidewalk next to one of our businesses. Is that one?
It's not restricted as long as he's not setting up a camp.
How is that not setting a camp?
Is it loitering?
Loitering's a little different, yes, but that's, you know, this, this doesn't restrict them from a process. You know, and I'll take it a step further. It happens to be he's using a shopping cart, but it doesn't restrict somebody who's in transit from walking with their suitcases down the street and sit. In transit from walking with their suitcases down the street and sitting down and taking. Taking a rest. You have to treat him. Just like you would treat anybody.
Let, let me jump in here and maybe save us all from another two hour discussion.
Yes, okay.
Whatever. We choose for time, place, manner, and all those things. Will create other situations. It's like you, you hear people refer to this as the Bassendorf effect. Soon as camping was prohibited out in Bassendorf. Moved into Kuzbey. Soon as Kuzbey tightened up their ordinances, moved into North Bend. We know as a group collectively, until there is a larger solution and a. County collaboration that we are, we are going to be. Dealing with whatever issues that we come up with. And so my guess is that eventually we might have to have some conversations as a city. About loitering, about how long you can hang out in a park and other things that happen downtown. Because we're setting up a, a place for these safe sleep sites. And I'm wondering, does, are we going to need to look at the park and say, maybe you get to only use the park for three hours at a time to not create a date? Day sleep site. But that's a whole.
Discussion.
For another point. That's why I, I think I was gonna save us a two hour conversation. So we could play out all the scenarios about that. But what we have to do today to prepare for the ordinance that we have to. Have in effect by July first is to start with somewhere. So does this conversation that we're having now lead us to? Um, as we, the, the number seven, because I think we're all on the same page with ordinance. I will have questions about time. When we decide on the final locations, because to me the time of. Something downtown would be different than another street.
Yeah.
But.
The ordinance has to be passed. To get the thirty days to take effect, right?
Correct.
Okay. Resolution. How long does that take to take effect?
Resolution can take effectively immediately.
Yes.
Yeah.
To finish. Time placement.
Yeah.
And the only thing also I'm gonna add is remember, we require in our ordinance. If you're establishing a campsite, which follows up with the city also, that we have to provide sanitary facilities. And garbage collection. So you pick a site, I mean, part of the issues are how you're gonna deal with. Those type of issues. We will establish. Dumpsters, Santa cans, something at any location. You so choose or reasonable access to said items. Um. But. And, you know, conceivably, it says warm and dry, so there could be some other issues. That we will facilitate later, but, um. Just remember that. Along with your locations, we are gonna provide. For sanitary. Needs and.
There's additional services.
Services that we're gonna provide.
Is the ordinance waiting for the resolution?
No.
To be figured out? So the ordinance that we've seen several times where you're talking about. Private, public.
Yes.
That's all.
How to contain fire, right? All that.
No fire.
No fire, yeah.
We can pass that thing tomorrow.
Yes.
I agree. How long are we gonna kick, how long are we gonna kick this can down, you know?
Tomorrow.
Until we figure out a good place.
Yeah, I, well, I, I think we've hashed this place out a whole bunch too, and I. I, I, I.
So does that take us to number seven?
We. Again, and I'm just gonna reiterate, we have to have the ordinance in place. You have an ability to change. The resolution, we have to have an ordinance in place. The ordinance as written takes effect July one.
Yeah.
It doesn't take effect thirty days afterwards. It takes effect July one. Um, assuming we pass it before the end of June, because thirty days is a minimum time, or first of June, because thirty days is a minimum time. And I'm not trying to kick the can down the road either. What I am saying is you can adopt the ordinance. You do have to have. By resolution. Some. Places.
Yes.
I think.
In place by July one, because the ordinance is relying on.
Okay.
Uh. The resolution. To establish allowable areas.
Yeah, okay.
Cause I mean, you know, and nobody's gonna be happy. I, I mean, we've had lists of names from the. From the housing deal. I, I could walk down every street in North Bend and get a list of names that don't want it there. We just gotta, we've hashed this thing out pretty. Pretty damn good. I, I think we need to, you know, and if, and if it don't work, that's when we change the really resolution. So I, I, you know, and I might be speaking out of turn, but this is getting old.
Well, so to our city administrator, I think he had a comment.
Okay, so there, there is one. Uh, there will be one change, because when we start to talk about the regular agenda. Um, there'll be one change that, that I will ask on the ordinance, which is. On page four hundred and fifty-two of your.
Wait, two hundred and fifty-two?
Four hundred and fifty-two.
Oh dear.
Four hundred and fifty-two of your regular meeting packet. So.
Well, just tell us what it did.
So, so, um.
There, okay.
So under section three, it says effective date. This ordinance becomes effective thirty days from the date of adoption. Um. I'm gonna ask that that specifically states, because this is different, and this, this is a, a legal question because. I know we have our charter and all that, so I'm gonna defer to the city attorney. But I want that to say effective July first. It's, it can say thirty days from the date or July first, whichever is. You know, but, but I need that July first date. That's important.
I'll, I'll agree with that.
Me too.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we pass the ordinance, can we pass a resolution? We, we get into a, it's not working.
Yeah, we change.
Next meeting.
Yeah.
Well, the only things that are not really gonna work, since we have this understanding that. It is.
Yeah.
You know, like the, the, the. Definition of what is, then those might have to be adjusted or interpreted, but. Those are.
And so.
Camping, it's in the ordinance.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
And stuff.
So.
So to finish up, so that will be the change on the ordinance. On the resolution. You, you have at any time until July first, when it goes into effect. To pass your resolution.
Okay.
Resolutions are different. So you have time on that. Your ordinance, we're asking that you start to move forward on that.
Okay.
And that, as long as you don't get within your thirty day period.
Tomorrow.
So, we're asking that. It'd be nice if we move that forward tomorrow. Um, if there's any controversy, then it would go to a second reading, a second meeting. So we have built time in for that. And then a Hail Mary if we have to do a special call. The, the, the resolution. You have until. Midnight on June thirtieth, so you can get that effective, you know, unless you wanna meet it.
So they can.
Yeah.
Somebody or some. Fraction of the community is not gonna like.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So just snap there or do it. Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, the, I was hearing a consensus from the council that we are all on the same page for the camping ordinance to be able to move forward. You're making note of a change.
Yeah, because when, when we go to the review of this council agenda.
Yeah.
That ordinance is on your agenda.
Okay.
And so that is the only change coming from staff that I'm recommending, and I apologize, yes.
So, so we'll still be able to, to move forward then with that tomorrow night.
Yes.
Okay, so. Do we now, are we able to move into like number three discussion, or I'm sorry?
You now can go to number seven, resolution.
Resolution.
On your work session.
Right. And, and the, okay, so back to you.
And I'm gonna defer this a little bit to Derek, but the, uh. I know when to dodge. So currently. Council has, and we canceled the resolution, which isn't set for adoption tomorrow.
It's not.
It's not.
It is not.
Not the, not number seven, the resolution three, three, five, four, sleep site location.
This is further discussion, because we knew you were gonna get. Um. Also letters, some people talking, asking you about. The current choice. The current areas. Are McPherson, right around City Hall, which came out of the town hall.
Yes.
Um, Pearson from. Virginia to California. California from. Me to McPherson. And Union. From.
Connecticut to California.
Connecticut to California.
And.
And Harbor Street. Those are the areas you currently have designated that are in the rule up resolution.
With cargo being in East, non-vehicle camp.
We don't have it as a non-vehicle camp, as it's currently written. Right now, you, you've had some. Intimation, there is signs there. There's no overnight parking. Or use.
We're gonna have to change that, yeah.
Um, whether it's parking or use, there's no overnight use. Signed on Harbor Street right now. And there are some sign restrictions on the other streets too, although. You know, most of them, some of them with the annex here, I mean, right in front of City Hall is. Two hour.
I believe so.
There was two hour in front of the R, annex, but we had those removed because nobody's using the annex. Why you have two hour parking in front of the annex? Um. I don't believe there's any on California. There is. Parking restrictions on Union from California to Connecticut, however. So there'll be some adjustments when you. Decide those, some of those signs may. Continue to exist, but they may save from. Seven AM to seven PM. Riders. That's the simple way. Why get rid of the signs? Just add a little rider.
Yeah.
Um, because normal business hours. Most of those two hour parking are set for normal business hours. Why? Um, if you're gonna allow overnight. Um. They, you allow overnight and during seven AM to seven PM. You, your two hour parking, if that's what it is, so.
So if we built into the resolution these four locations. We don't have to. Designate vehicle and non-vehicle.
We do not.
Okay. Well, that seems easy, Larry.
Yeah, that's amazing.
I mean, for the, you know, again, we know that we're gonna be looking at this a month later. Let's just put it on a request now, one month after July first. We're gonna be. Reviewing this, yeah. Just. So then. You're looking for feedback from the council now.
We are, because the resolution and, and our. I just wanna free to keep in mind. A couple things, and I understand the reason for limiting, because you can always expand. Um, and it also makes it easier for us, because. As far as regulation. And providing services that's in significant locations, but. You have somewhere between. Twenty and thirty. Vehicle campers in town, I think. Now, Nick might be able to. We, we've been doing, uh, reducing our vehicles fairly well, but we still have somewhere between twenty and thirty. And remember, a lot of this is seasonal too. Uh, the winter, we're pretty wet, but in the summer you will have more, and that's. And somewhere between thirty and sixty that we are aware of. That are camping in doorways or in tents, or. I'm not saying, because our point in time count. Said there was eight hundred in Kuzbey North Bend, and. You kinda gotta look at that as sixty, forty. That's roughly three hundred and twenty, but that also includes. People that are couch surfing. Uh, people that are partially housed. I mean, by partially housed, um. Well, couch surfing and.
That's one stat we want Markfield to win.
But, uh. Regardless, there's somewhere. Counting the partially housed or the couch surfers are somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty homeless. That were in North Bend at the point in time count, which was in January. Um, we don't have the most recent data, do you?
Oh.
Uh, the, the, the.
The last, the last point in time.
Yeah, the twenty nineteen is the most I've seen. Um, twenty twenty, um, so.
To correlate. The amount of locations were designated to that point.
Any number we can see.
I mean, we're.
Well. Your, your obligation. Under state law is to have reasonable accommodation. For those that live in your city. Whatever, I, I'm not gonna define that. I think the attorneys are gonna define that at some point.
I mean, but, but if we use these four locations, it's a starting.
It's a starting point.
It is a starting point. And all I was just trying to reiterate to you is potentially how many are there? And then the other issue, and I know Marcus brought it up. In the past. Is the issue of state created danger.
Yeah.
Um, where. If you put them all in one spot, you're also liable for. What happens to a certain, actually potentially liable, I'm not gonna say liable. Potentially liable if. You are forcing someone, someone to be in a location and they have no alternative. And it causes physical harm to them.
Yeah.
Or mental harm.
When.
Somewhere else.
One of my biggest questions is. Um, if. Do we, if Harbor Boulevard, we continue on with that parking lot down there. Is it, is it something where we should say camping? Uh, or no, we don't wanna, no, 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 no. Um, so you may rest with a.
Yes.
Yes, you, you may rest with the tent, but not an RV. Like, should we distinguish the two? I'm worried about. Do you want an RV pulling in when somebody's in a tent? Down there.
This is also an issue that we've got to address. We've got.
We have some time to, yeah, so tomorrow night is the adoption of the ordinance. The resolution will come, but at some point, do we wanna distinguish whether or not that's. Tent camping or it's RV camping, one or the other.
That's, it can be both. And. For example, you can say McPherson. Their sidewalks are wide enough, they have to leave four feet clear. They can be camping on the sidewalk. In theory, they could be camping on the fire department's front lawn. In that area, of course. Jim has sprinkler system that comes on, but.
I see.
But that's, I'm just saying.
Counselor Nordoff has her hand. I think I need to be careful too, because when I say the word camping, people are probably visualizing setting up a camp down there. And that's not what we're saying. It's a sleep site or whatever we determine, eight hours must be picked up.
Hours.
Yeah, I gotta be careful about using that language, because people think like, oh, now you've set up a, a camp. Down on the water, and that's not it, and I, I know.
Public property is limited time.
Limited time.
Each day.
Uh, if you read that ordinance, they, if you've got a tent down there, they've gotta take it down in the market.
They have to take it down. So, uh, Counselor Nordoff, you have a question. Why are we not using the parking lot at the corner of McPherson and Virginia? Which could have fencing. I mean, slats to kind of provide privacy. I, I, I'm not hearing that anywhere we're putting a dumpster. And anywhere that we're putting a porta potty.
Well, we discussed, we discussed that, and it has to be, we're gonna have to tow people when they're not in the right.
Okay. Somebody wrote a letter, I, I read it before the, the meeting started, and we do have the, the. Fenced and locked. Um, trans, um, our, our street department that maybe part of that could be, if we had to impound an RV, it could be put there. I am not in favor of using Harbor Avenue. I think we would be better off. With less. Community. As we've seen in our public comments, less, less, um, really. Upset business owners. And property owners, if we made use of that vacant lot that's on Virginia and McPherson. It could have a dumpster, it could have a porta potty. And I think it would save us a lot of grief that we're gonna hear from. The possibility of peeping, people setting up along the waterfront.
Counselor Schultz. Um, well, I will say that we did have that, we, we talked about that spot, and I think I, there are some reasons why. We said that that was a good spot, and then we took it back, because we also thought about the idea of where we wanted to put some things. I know that, I think Pat said that. But there's no one, there's no place that people are not gonna be unhappy, and so part of my. The, the reason that Harbor does speak to me a little bit is because it is businesses, which I'm sorry, businesses, but it's not residents. Like, you're not, not living there potentially. And again, our town is so tiny. And there are neighborhoods everywhere. And I just think about people. And again, I get that businesses need people to go, but during sleep times, those businesses would be less impacted than neighborhoods.
Hmm, we might, maybe it would do, uh, to, just for Harbor, to have that be a ten PM to six AM.
Hmm.
And other things to need those seven to seven.
But businesses don't even open, like, some of the businesses down there don't open it, so I think you're just trying to get people to leave, but I just think anyways.
Okay, so, so.
And remember.
With you, but it's also a, it's also. Um. You know, an addressing of those needs, those businesses, who, who we need, like, it's, it's vital working in the city.
And I, I, I hear what Counselor Nordoff is saying about if you. You know, it's, it's hard to get the people to come in and say this is downtown, so. You know, it's it's hard to get the people to come in and say this is downtown, so let's. Put it out there, so use the parking lot, let's have all the businesses on Virginia come down, do you wanna hear from Gino's Pizza in the back alley? And the hospice, and the people that live on Union, and the people that live on McPherson? Do you wanna see how many people are gonna be upset about that?
All right.
Yeah.
I think that we've had a lot of hashing out, and there's a draft resolution here that. Could work, and I, I, and like I said, I'm, I can't picture. Uh, sitting here and and doing all this stuff for the resolution and signing it July first, I I think we're just. Wasting time, yeah, I think we're wasting time, I think.
Um, I I.
Ma'am, Counselor Nordoff, yes.
I disagree that we're wasting time, we have eliminated Hamilton, and I think that was probably a good idea. Even though I think it was my idea originally to look at. A street that's not paved, and maybe, you know, people could camp there, so I'm glad we moved away from Hamilton. Based on the feedback we got from people at the the senior housing down there, so we're not wasting time.
Well, that would be to get everybody in North Bend to sign that.
And and this is something we don't have to, um, do, um, the resolution part is not yet, so Counselor Nordoff, go to every business on Virginia. And all the streets and knock on their door and ask them what they think of that, what they think of that parking lot right there. And get feedback from them, because maybe they didn't come to the town hall, or we haven't heard a letter, but if they're listening tonight, let's have them reach out.
Most of the businesses are that away from Meade and McPherson, they are not right downtown. The other thing that's across the street is the Cuz Cow County Courthouse Annex, which is going to be leveled. So, and then there's the skating rink on one quarter, the solid launch doesn't have any doors on that side.
All the neighborhoods right up that street, Harbor's the most removed.
Tensing with with the blind slats on it, it's it's just an idea, because. And and I was explaining this to a friend of mine who was asking, and she's like, why don't you have a place where people can park their stuff? So they don't have to push their grocery cart around with all their stuff on it, and and my thought is, well. We don't have a place for it, and that takes money that we don't have and facilities that we don't have, so I tried to explain it, but. That would be a possibility if you have a place that you lock when people leave in the morning. And you have your dumpster and you have your porta potty, it would be one step toward. A a village such as down, um, Cold Cold Bank Village down there. People can lock their things up and make better use of their day, because they don't have to take all their possessions along with them.
Counselor Schultz.
That is the road that leads to Hillcrest Elementary School, so buses are traveling on that road. The amount of neighborhoods that are across the street, I think they're forgetting that there are houses, there's the funeral home, it's so close to neighborhoods. And so the fact that we can lock it up, I don't necessarily feel like that is, I don't wanna leave stuff places.
You're right in the middle of residential, that's where Harbor's been removed, you know.
You are gonna have people leaving the Harbor area.
Go ask, go ask the neighborhoods, walk around door to door, ask the businesses and ask the people that live, because that's in their neighborhood, I want you to talk to them. I think that's important.
Well, we're also gonna revisit locations. Because you might have to start with some work, absolutely have to start with something.
Um, good, to our our city administrator, did you have another comment? Because I know we did talk about that lot, saying that is the only place that we would be able to lock up the RVs, the parks, maintenance center really isn't. An option, was there other information about that that we needed to know?
Yeah, there's two things, and since you're asking about that, um, I'm glad the counselor brought up money, because that is key.
Yeah.
Um, that's the thing that I need to hone in, forget the fact that buses, forget about the fact that it's downtown. That there's thousands of cars that go by that look that, none of that's relevant from a staff recommendation. The reason the staff recommendation has reserved it is so that you in the public understands. That our police department at one point earlier this year got within fifteen thousand dollars of breaking its budget. You don't have the resource and tax dollar money to have a tow yard store. The vehicles and the belongings for thirty plus days required by the law. You had a counselor who was previously on this council to explain how much it costs. To impound the RVs if you have to tow them, then store all of their belongings securely for thirty days. So I want to impress that this is not an issue about. Really whether or not folks see, that is a huge issue all to its own. And I know I'm speaking a little elevated, but I'm going to ask that one of the counselors, please use the listing devices that we provide. Because it's important that we all hear the same message. That said, the reason I raised my hand was, um, on the resolution, I was also then going to ask that we modify it. When it does come back, um, with an effective date, so that, um, uh. It clearly states that once council adopts it, that it's effective July first. And then that way, any other subsequent changes or resolutions have an effective date on there. So that there's no confusion on enforcement from the law enforcement side, so those are the only two, um, from my side. Um, staff may have some additional, um, but I'll defer back to you, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Um, and I do wanna note, I think it is important that we recognize that we heard from two businesses tonight of all of downtown. We heard of of, uh, the owner of the Beauty and the Beast and Ingles Furniture. Those are the two businesses that we heard from. And the, and then we had two others, well, businesses. Three, sorry, we had another letter, so it was three.
Mid Columbia Bus Company.
And the mid Columbia Bus Company, four, sorry.
Brett Clarno.
Yeah.
Um, losing packet, not.
Put it at the end of a neighborhood in front of Hillcrest, let's see how many people are gonna write you, and I do, I'm not, I'm not being snarky here, I think you should go talk to the people on that street. If you really think that's a viable solution, I want you to get that feedback.
Council needs to talk to the people who park around Grand Circle, two single family houses, a big apartment house.
Let's invite every, every, let's do it again, we want a third town hall or fourth town hall, everybody's had the opportunity.
I had said, we're kicking it down the road, I mean, no matter where you put it, you're gonna piss somebody off. So we've got, and this is through town hall meetings, through numerous meetings here at this council chamber. We've got these four locations, put them in the resolution.
They're not the best, the most.
And if it doesn't work, we change it, I mean.
Yeah. Good points, okay, was there, what else do you need from us tonight?
Um, times, but that's either gotta be this meeting or.
Well, I I think it was mentioned earlier, um, about a ten PM to six AM. Um, as a start for everything.
That was for Harvard Avenue specifically.
For Harvard.
I thought.
And six AM town, and I I ain't gonna drag.
Although I do want, we have our police chief here, and I remember making a comment, because this is gonna be something that affects your job as far as. When we're creating these sleep sites and we're saying, you gotta pick up and leave, unless somebody from the council. You know, that's, we need to, we need to make sure that that fits in with your shift change, so are we putting extra? Is it easy, is it, would six AM or seven P, six, ten to six or ten to seven be better?
Six is not an optimal.
Six is not an optimal time.
I I there is examples.
Okay, so ten PM to seven AM for a reasonable, for a sleep site, we fill it.
I know.
Yeah, Counselor Nordoff.
Yes, why, if you have somebody camping in the car with children, do you really wanna make them drive the streets until ten PM? I think eight or nine would be reasonable.
These are crisis situations, this is not.
Yes, and so, so I think. To settle down a family, if it's in an RV, or if it's in a car, or if it's in a tent.
Street are you thinking of, of, you know, if we said, um, Meade? Do we wanna say, if we said Meade, the streets on Meade and McPherson there, that's on there, right? That was one of the streets.
Between Meade and McPherson.
Between Cal, okay, that area there, do we wanna say ten at night or eight there?
Ten at night is too late, I think it should be eight, to be reasonable and you human, humane to people.
We can do a different time for each area, so if you, if you wanna do eight PM in that area, seven, because I wanna, I, this is very important. That we really try to come up with these solutions together.
Yes.
I want to make sure that we are as close together.
I only wanted really.
So Harbor would be the later one, the ten PM to six or seven AM.
Seven AM, yes.
And then the other ones, eight PM.
I think that's.
Okay, okay.
Yes, for the rest.
May I shut the doors, I'm getting kinda cold.
Do you have that?
Yeah.
I know, I was like.
Wait, so can I, can I, that what I'm hearing, so what I'm hearing is, we have the list. In the resolution for the locations, and we're suggesting Harbor is between ten PM and seven AM. And the others are between eight and seven AM.
Yes.
And that should do the.
Yes, so that as Counselor Nord, Nordoff.
Downtown having a little Fourth of July time.
Yeah, and as you pointed out, if this, if there is a family that's like, I gotta get them down to eight, but I think it's. Trying to make sure we all point out, we're, this, these are crisis situations, we are not looking to fix a long-term solution.
Yeah.
But if you're a family, you're going there, and if not, down at Harbor, and what, besides times, what else would you need from us this evening?
Any changes in the location if you were to do that this meeting, um, otherwise the times are enough to flush out the resolution. Yeah, possibilities.
Okay, and then it's, I think you have a consensus that that is where we're at, it's, we're starting small, we will review it. Within the first thirty days to see where we're at, how we want, we wanna hear from our police chiefs and our fire chiefs, and anybody working in public safety or resource officers. How it's working for them. And.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Four hundred and fifty-two over.
Yeah, so let's see.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Review the city council agenda is number eight, um. Right?
Oh, yes.
Um, let's, okay, I'm gonna take a two-minute recess.
Sticker.
Okay, all right, one, two, three, four, we are back, we're, uh, being, bringing back into session, we're waiting for Counselor Nordoff has. Not returned since our two-minute recess, but we're gonna go ahead and continue on, yes, so we are looking at. Um, thank you, Counselor Gall, reviewing the council, the city council agenda for May ninth. Um, Mr. City Administrator, can I, um, have you walk us through the council meeting for tomorrow?
Yes, Madam Mayor, uh, the first will be the call to order and pledge allegiance, followed by two ceremonial items. One will be the ceremonial, uh, swearing in of our new chief of police, uh, Cal Metz. Uh, that'll be followed by a proclamation on National and Local Travel and Tourism Week. Uh, and so the head of the Convention Visitor Bureau will be here for that proclamation. You then have consent agenda, consent calendar items, the first is the approval of the minutes from April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Acknowledgement of the bills from twenty twenty-three, and then the OLCC, uh, application approvals. Um, those are the renewals of, um, uh, approval of applications for liquor of no BLLC. Maria's Authentic Mexican Restaurant and American Market Twenty, those at this point are housekeeping. Um, if there are any of those items that need to be removed for non-consensus, this would be the time to let staff know.
Hearing and hearing any items that need to be removed from the consent agenda? Not hearing anyone, so.
All right, you'll then move on to public comment, and then number five is an ordinance, this is chapter three and four, your comp plan amendments. And title eighteen of North Bend City Code Amendments, that's page forty-eight in your packet, and you have your city planner. Who will brief you on that ordinance. The ordinances.
All right, Madam Mayor, members of the council, um, before you are two proposed ordinances pertaining to, um. The whole of the project with the housing needs analysis, housing production strategy and economic opportunities analysis, analysis. Um, I've broken these into two ordinances to better reflect, uh, each proposal. Of which there's, uh, comprehensive plan amendments and a North Bend City Code, uh, chapter eighteen amendment. Uh, which is our zoning code for those of you that don't know. Um, the comprehensive plan amendments are to adopt the housing needs analysis, housing production strategy and economic opportunities analysis. As functional plans, uh, the amendments to chapter three, economic and chapter four housing amendments. Um, are to incorporate the facts and findings of those plans. Uh, we're required to adopt the housing needs analysis, housing production strategy and economic opportunities analysis, which I will refer to as HNA, HPS and EOA. Come from here on out, um, it, we're required to adopt those in accordance with state law. We have until December thirty-first to do so, um, so there is a little bit of time, but we do lose the support of our consultants on May thirty-first. Our contract with them is up. Um, our housing needs analysis, uh, we don't unfortunately have the luxury of acknowledging without adoption. Uh, like Cuz Bay did, they had a, uh, existing housing needs analysis, which, um. Is good until twenty twenty-seven, so they had the opportunity to kind of, um. You know, acknowledge the plan without adopting it, um, as a functional plan. So the chapter three comprehensive plan proposal includes some general housekeeping, such as pulling, uh, administrative provisions that fit better in our development code. Um, some changes to the narrative to better reflect the economic reality of our area today, as our prior study was done in the nineties. Uh, the proposed amendments discuss economic trends as well as future trends in sectors. Future trends and sectors that North Bend should strive to capture, um, you you know, like tourism industry is a big one. Um, and the EOA shows that the amount of buildable employment lands, uh, both industrial and commercial. And shows a net need for commercial lands in the future, um, as North Bend continues to grow. Even though we're under strength and and we're projected to be under strength in commercial lands, uh, we're projected to be over-strength in industrial lands. There may be an opportunity in the future to repurpose some of those industrial lands into commercial, um, uses. The chapter four comprehensive plan amendments include some similar housekeeping to the chapter three amendments, um, the proposal incorporates. Past and projected future trends, uh, related to housing and housing affordability. It incorporates findings from the buildable lands inventory, which looks at buildable lands, uh, within North Bend's. It incorporates findings from the buildable lands inventory, which looks at buildable lands uh within North Bend's current urban growth boundary. Well, not every lot is financially feasible to be built on. Um, there are specific qualifiers that are required to be met in order to have a property removed. Um, such as wetlands, steep slopes and other environmental factors. Um, then the housing needs analysis uh includes information on demographic trends, income levels, affordability. Numbers of units uh needed within the North Bend for the next twenty years. In figure five point four, um, our projected need is two hundred and fifty-eight units over the next twenty years. We know anecdotally that that number is too low, um, and it's addressed in the narrative of Section Five, um, titles, future housing needs. Per state law, we're required to utilize Portland State's population projections when making land use decisions such as these. So we don't have a whole lot of wiggle room as far as how those numbers are, uh, come about.
Yeah.
Um, the projected number. Does only limit us from expanding our urban growth boundary for the time being and does not limit our ability to produce additional housing units um. In the foreseeable future. Uh, while it is extremely disappointing that a more consistent strategy methodology cannot be utilized. Um, our consultants have agreed to prepare a memorandum with alternate projections based on a more realistic growth pattern. Um, and they're working on this now and should have it in our hands relatively soon.
Okay, is, this is important to note because I was concerned if we accept the results of the housing analysis. Um, that that could put us in a jeopardized situation if applying for grants. Um, saying we need housing, then we're like, no, you don't, because the analysis says you didn't. So you, the city. Planner or city administrator, you all feel comfortable with that memo? That would be enough?
For, for planning purposes, I feel comfortable with it, um, because they will project uh several different uh rates of growth. And, you know, kind of reevaluate those numbers based on those.
Okay.
The other uh benefit, um, as, as stated and then reiterated is that, um. Uh, as new data comes in, we will be able to readopt and revise. And so, uh, we have that window. Basically, um, uh, the state is dictating that you shall do this.
That's.
Um, even though that there is an issue, which, you know, was well-reported in the newspaper, um, when I decided to. Give you a little diatribe of all the issues um that were there. And so the consultants have stepped up to the table and listened. Um, to uh your feedback and the staff feedback. And so it gives um, uh, the, the governing body an opportunity to redress this at a later time. And so this is very positive news.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yeah, that just, you know. Scanning this, really scanning all this information.
All three hundred ninety-seven pages.
Yeah, right. It struck me that, you know, I like a lot of the implementation, a lot of the suggestions, those fit in really well and made sense. But I didn't understand the um risk we were taking. When those numbers, you know, that linear projection is not what we have. We have a hockey stick up. So that was my concern. So what I'm hearing is. That we will have an addendum to this report that's using some more recent numbers and some more reasonable projections. Um, so that we can manage that in the future. Some of the, well, you know, you. We, there's some kind of management thing in there. And then a lot of the ideas are, are great. I mean, they make sense.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And um, yeah, so I, I'm just gonna continue on because I was getting to some of those points.
He's getting to the good part. Keep on going.
It's a good part.
Yeah.
Um, so in addition to all of that, um, the housing amendments in Chapter Eighteen. They come from the housing production strategy, um, aimed to alleviate some of the development bottlenecks that exist now. Uh, for different types of development in multiple zones. So. One of the things we're looking at is getting a little bit more density in um certain zones or creating benefits for um. Developing higher density, um, and it's not, you know, huge apartment complexes in every zone. But it might look something like a triplex or a quadplex um on a big enough lot. Um, and let's see, so.
Mixed use too, I think.
Mixed use.
Perfect.
Yeah. Um, that's one of the, definitely one of the strategies in there. Um. And so the state of Oregon is gonna be conducting a statewide housing needs analysis as well. Um, and I believe that starts next year. Um, and that's to comply with House Bill two thousand and one. And they'll be utilizing a different methodology than what's currently prescribed by law. Um. And so they won't be using the same methods that Portland State uses in their projections, and they're gonna consider things like second vacation homes. And homelessness and, you know, kind of the, the, a more realistic need for housing. Um, and that's something that's on their agenda in coming up.
That's great.
Um, the total eighteen amendments um include some changes in the allowable housing um within traditionally lower-density zones. Um, and that's called middle housing, um, and that looks like duplexes, triplexes. Uh, college clusters and, and ADUs, uh, things like that. Um, and the proposed changes are requirements of bigger cities currently.
Mm-hmm.
And so we're kind of just getting ahead of the game on this. Um. And it's, you know, the aim is to address the housing, very real housing needs that we have in the area. Um. And then due to some comments from DLCD in the housing production strategy, there is a few changes and updates. Um, and I'm just gonna burn through what those are real quick. They're pretty minor. They're just, uh, to comply with statutory requirements. Um, and requirements of our grant with them. So. Um, the first one is an additional, or two additional appendix items, um, showing a summary of stakeholder meetings and pre-huh. Um, housing production strategy survey results. Um. There's an additional narrative regarding outreach, stakeholder meetings and surveys conducted. Um. There is the removal of the urban growth boundary requirement as a priority, um, and that is because of the housing needs analysis. Um, there's clarification on what near-term means, uh, which is one to four years and what long-term means, which is five to eight years. Um, or longer. And uh, some narrative that basically explaining that it'll likely, likely take some time to implement some of these changes. Um, there's uh some additional narrative and tables um showing how each proposed production strategy. Uh, could affect vulnerable populations, um, such as elderly, low-income BIPOC communities. Um, and then some tables showing how each proposed strategy, um. Would affect affordable housing, housing options and choices, uh, locations of housing and fair housing. Um, and like I mentioned, all the, all the, the proposed plans aim to address the economic and uh housing needs in the area. And um, I feel really confident that the proposed uh policy changes. Um, in Title Eighteen and in the Comprehensive Plan are gonna push us in the right direction as far as um. Both housing and, and the economy goes. And I'd be happy to take any questions. Um, Matt Hassey, our consultant with MIG is online as well. If you have any questions for him.
Ken, did you have a question?
Common question, which is the, the couple of places that I felt were really off. Were um looking at the rental costs and then claiming that the middle portion of the housing market. Is generally well-sufficient. So those are my biggest things I think are really missing, just having. Anecdotally, countless organizations, um, we've been here, the best-paying jobs. Are not, people aren't finding places to live. So those are my two hot buttons. You know, you can do, you can look at Craigslist or Zephyr and see very clearly how our rates. Are red and different. There's nothing cheaper about living in a rural area. So those are the two hot buttons. I just wanted to say that out loud.
Did you guys, did you have a comment, Councilor Norhoff?
I'm, I'm just wondering, could you explain, please? There was a public hearing before the planning commission, but were to adopt this without a public hearing for the city council? And I'm not understanding why, why that's the case.
There, there'll be a public hearing tomorrow.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
Yes, I missed that. Right. Thank you.
No problem.
Yeah, any other questions? So tomorrow we'll have um, the, so the ordinance is uh two zero six seven?
Two zero six seven, two zero six eight. Um, so two zero six seven is the Comprehensive Plan Amendments.
Okay. And, yeah. And that is when we'll have our public hearing, if anybody chooses, and this has been already, this has been noticed and posted online and people have an opportunity to sign up. So Councilor Norhoff, if somebody wanted to come testify tomorrow, they could, um, during the public.
Well, it should be on the agenda because normally it is. As, as a separate agenda item, the public hearing, it's not.
Is it not a public hearing?
No.
I'm gonna refer to our city recorder and our city administrator on that. Is there confusion on how this was posted or?
I don't see a public hearing.
So their own agenda item.
Is it, let me take a look here on the. Do we need to go ahead and move this to the meeting in two weeks?
I'm confirming.
Okay.
So.
All right, stay tuned for a moment here.
Why do we have a public hearing? Because we've had two public hearings. Now. Ordinarily, any ordinance adoption has a public hearing prior to it. Um, as part of the public, the ordinance adoption process. Um, is to have comments on the ordinance in public hearing. It should be a little more clear in our agenda, probably. Um, but that's, that is part of, along with the camping ordinance. There is a public hearing process, part of adoption of ordinance, and maybe we need to have Mark involved in that comment, but.
Or push it back for two weeks.
Yeah, we, if, if there's not a timeline, if you want to rewrite, because it's on the agenda, you're just saying you feel like it's not as clear that it's a public hearing. We can change the language.
Right, that's why you don't feel public hearing.
I, so I, I thought.
Any ordinance has a public hearing as part of the process. It's so state.
Um, don't see what they said.
It's just not clear on the agenda, because.
It doesn't say public hearing.
It doesn't say public hearing.
And it's not implied that within the ordinance, okay.
Yeah, if that's the case, even your camping ordinance has to be. Yes, Mark.
Our attorney, he's here, is.
Yeah, so as far as the. Comp plan adjustments, um, amendments, I, I, I'm gonna have to put a little more thought into that, but. Um, your ordinance adoption process is pursuant to your charter, Section Thirty-One. Which just talks about the number of readings and how you adopt an ordinance, so the, the camping ordinance. Would not be required to have a, quote-unquote, public hearing.
All right, so, 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 so we're on the same page. We're on the same page. Okay, so, because I'm like. That was the question I had asked, but, but get a different answer. So normal ordinances, that's why you do. The first and the second reading, but if there's not an issue, so that's not an issue. A um, a comp plan amendment is different, and so that's land use. So the question is. Are we required? And so, uh, you've got until tomorrow to um guide that. Staff's going to work through that with you. And if that's the case, we'll just move that to the next meeting. Um, not an issue.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, no problem. And so then, let's see, the next item. Um, tomorrow evening. Would that be number, where were we at on this?
All right, so that gets you over to ordinance two oh six nine, which you kind of already discussed, which is your camping ordinance.
Yes.
Um, it's up to you all if you want to discuss it further. Otherwise, you can move on to the award of your consulting services contract with the EPA grant. And uh, your um, Public Works Director will bring you up to speed on uh that.
Okay. What's that? We are, yeah, I think we're ready for number.
I didn't wait for much of a response.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, mayors of the city council, uh, the city received one point three four million dollar direct federal appropriation. Uh, last year. Which involves four projects, uh. At this point. City staff doesn't have the capacity to do that work, uh, all at once within the grant. Period. Uh, we are required to have a twenty percent match. For the project, unfortunately, this whole project started as two point seven million dollars worth of, of work. Um, city staff did have the capacity to do. A few of those projects, but any money spent before March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two did not count as our match. Which we spent one point three million dollars worth of city funds on projects, because it was supposed to be shovel-ready when we applied for it, which means. Ready, and we needed to do it, so we did part of it, almost half. Um. We therefore went out for proposals for consulting firms to uh manage the CPA grant. And if you, I didn't include the, uh, I didn't include the estimates. You can look at the number of hours that's anticipated on this. Um, associated with the cost. Uh, we just don't have the capacity with our current staffing to do that work. We're required to do a twenty percent match. The EPA grant covers. Almost all of the construction cost. Uh, when I say almost all, that's partially because we expanded. The Pony Slue Road Project include road repairs and storm sewer. So we're paying for that out of our storm sewer fund and our. Um. Our street funds propose to do that. Uh. With that said. The total project's gonna be about one point eight million dollars in construction. Standard consulting fees. We put out our request for proposals. We had interest from three firms. We ended up only getting a proposal from one. I'm not quite sure why. But we only get a proposal from one. We anticipated about twenty percent of the construction cost. That's kind of standard fee. Range for this type of project. Um, Civil West. Provided us a proposal because of the size of the proposal, I don't want to get into it too much. If you anticipate over. Consultant proposal valued at over a hu- two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you cannot ask for cost in the proposal. So you select your consultant and then you negotiate a fee after you select your consultant. We did receive a fee estimate, which is about nineteen percent. Like I said, anticipated cost was about. Uh, twenty percent, because that's standard for the industry. Uh, this is a not-to-exceed fee. In essence, it's a, based on an hourly cost, so if they don't need to spend the time. They won't spend the time. We get billed less. If for some reason, it's a not-to-exceed, there's always a caveat to not-to-exceed. If we don't change the scope of the work that's anticipated. The fee can't be exceeded. Uh, staff reviewed it a little bit in negotiation. I talked them down a whole six thousand dollars on the not-to-exceed fee. But.
Good job.
Good job.
Staff therefore recommends, again, it's a not-to-exceed, so um. Staff therefore recommends approval of this, and get these projects underway. Pump Station Four is most critical of these, uh, or having to Band-Aid the pump station to keep it running.
Yeah.
It probably won't be built till next year, but. Staff therefore recommends a word, again, not-to-exceed fee of three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars.
Okay, got that, Councilor Gall.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Anything else from the Public Works Department?
That'd be all. Um, that takes you, Madam Mayor, to number eight. There'll be um, no number eight. There are no executive sessions that'll follow the city administrator's report, any committee reports, any council comments. There is no anticipated other business, and then that gets you to adjournment and takes you back. To your regular work session agenda, uh, which is number nine.
Review the Urban Renewal Agency Agenda, and we have, we do have a uh agenda for that, correct?
Yes.
Somehow in, in Derek's four hundred and fifty pages, some of my pages got. Out of order here.
Yes, so.
That one.
Yeah, yes, so Madam Mayor.
There. If we ever have iPads and we can show your words and save a three.
Yes, we actually are talking and discussing.
That's a lot.
And evaluating that.
So tomorrow night, we will uh call the Urban Renewal Agency meeting to order. We'll approve the, or we'll look at, when we look for a motion to approve the minutes. And then we'll have the executive director's report. Was there anything else that you wanted to report for that? Okay, then, there isn't any other? Okay, then there isn't any other uh work session business and we can go ahead and adjourn tonight's meeting. Meeting adjourned.